Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for coming. And I'm going to welcome not only our in-house audience, but also all those that are watching us on the various opportunities to do that on TV and on social media. So, welcome to the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce 2024 Council Candidate Forum. Thank you for joining us today. We do appreciate everybody taking the time to be here and in person and in your homes. My name is Mark Cove. I'm a longtime Oakdale resident, also Chief Development Officer for First Resource Bank, and 25-plus-year member of the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, in addition to Director of the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce. In addition, I served as elected official for the ISD 622 School Board and have been around town for quite some time. With me here tonight, co-host right to my right, longtime Oakdale resident Angie Prop, 25-year member and director as well of the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, and Vice President and Cash Management Sales Manager for Highland Bank. Thank you, Angie, for being with us tonight. And to my far right is Paul Ranky. Paul is a longtime Oakdale resident, longtime member of the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, current president of Silver Oak Development. And Mr. Ranky spent almost two decades in public service for the city of Oakdale, most recently as its past mayor, and before that, both council member and chair of the Economic Development Commission. So, we have with us tonight three of the candidates. There's six people vying for two council seats that are both without incumbents running, so we have three of those six here with us tonight. Two did not respond to our request to take part in this forum, and that is Christopher Theewes and Rafi Polino. One did RSVP to attend, but called us in the morning that they were unable to participate due to being ill, and that was Mr. Bill Polkerebeck. But thank you for the three that are here. So, from my left to my right, Carrie Moore, Gary Stevenson, and Juan Santos Escobal. So, thank you all three for coming. This order was drawn randomly, used a random generator on Google to determine our order. So, we will have opening statements here shortly. They'll be three minutes in length, and we'll start right to my left, to the viewers, yeah, the viewing left too, but to my left. So, Carrie will go first, Gary will go next, Juan will follow up last, and then when we do closing statements right at the end, and we're going to stop taking questions at about 8:25 PM, we'll do the exact reverse order, which means Gary's going to be second both times. Anyhow, so that's always fun. So, in addition, I do want to make sure the moderators, the three of us, will be asking questions as we go. We've had quite a few questions already submitted from the Oakdale Area Chamber and its board, and we will be having questions coming in from our audience, both here and on TV. Those are coming in via text, and that'll be up on the screen here shortly, but the number is 651-230-6565. But I will have to mention that there is no questions of a personal or nature or anything that's character assassination that will not be allowed to hit the airwaves. So, we're here to learn about people and try to understand who's running and vying for these important spots on our city council, and look forward to learning a little bit more about all three of you. So, with that said, let's get on to the introductions. And again, three minutes for the introductions. You can take a little less if you want. The more, the less time we do on all that, the more questions we should be able to get through. So, here we go. Carrie.
I want to start by thanking the Oakdale Chamber of Commerce and everyone who helped to execute this event tonight, and I want to thank Juan and Gary for joining me up here. My name is Carrie Moore. My husband, our youngest son, and I have lived in Oakdale for two and a half years, just about two and a half years. I'm currently the Executive Director of the White Bear Area Chamber of Commerce. I am a volunteer in lots of different spaces. I'm on the Oakdale Parks and Rec Commission. I'm on the University of Minnesota School of Public Health Alumni Society Board, where I'm on the Executive Committee as the Chair of the Mentor Committee, and I'm on the Board of Directors for Big Fluffy Dog Rescue, which is in Nashville, Tennessee. I am a runner, and I play hockey. At least, I dress and skates and get on the ice with the team, so I try maybe. But transitioning out of a military community a couple of years ago, where everyone was so supportive, was really scary. We moved to Minnesota in response to deep personal loss in our family, and we moved here without seeing our community and without seeing our house. We bought our house without ever walking through it. And when I started working here, I was working in a remote position, so I desperately missed being part of a community. The first thing I did was apply for the Parks and Rec Commission because I really wanted to be a part of this community where I lived, and I have been so excited ever since, quite honestly. It really helped me find my passion for being a part of the community, and it really helped me find really warm, welcoming residents. I have gotten to see what incredible leaders and staff that we have in Oakdale, and it has made me want to become a part of it even more. I care deeply about public safety, and after listening to our police chief, Nick Newton, I am learning all I can about his proposals for recruitment and retention of our police. I'm eager to support his effort to keep our department fully staffed so our community is safe. I'm passionate about the health and wellness of our community, and I'm committed to supporting that by resourcing the updated parks plan when it's released. I am so proud of what Oakdale has done to look forward and develop adequate housing and the infrastructure that will support it. I know our next area of focus is the Tanner's Lake development, and I'm committed to learning each perspective so that I can support the right project that develops a profitable product that the community can be proud of. I care about health, wealth, and wellness. As the leader of a local Chamber of Commerce, I'm keenly aware of the critical role that our small and large businesses play in our community, and I'll use my experiences to engage the business community to help guide our decision-making. As a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, I'm committed to ensuring we have outdoor space that delivers multitudes of outdoor recreation opportunities. I want to do this, working with everybody in the room, everybody watching, and everybody who's not even engaged yet, and I'm really excited to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Severson.
My name is Gary Severson.
Severson. See, I knew I'd get it wrong when I asked the pronunciation.
I'll warn you, I'm descended from a long line of preachers, so you may have to reel me in after two minutes.
All right.
Sometimes I get going and I can't stop. I've been an Oakdale resident for 35 years. In fact, I closed my house exactly 35 years ago today in Oakdale. I raised my family here, three daughters that were raised. And Oakdale has been wonderful for us and a great place to raise our family. I've had a lifetime of leadership and service, starting with student council in high school. I've served in my church in leadership and service positions. I currently serve on the Oakdale Economic Development Commission, and I was appointed by our Commissioner Karwoski and the Washington County Parks and Open Space Commission, enjoying both of them. I've learned a lot about our business community, and I'm really proud of the staff and the council and the Economic Development Commission and the support they show for our business community. So, wonderful and surprising to me until I learn more. So, I'm passionate as well about parks and open space. When I talked to Stan several years, a few years ago, and was appointed to the commission, he told me you have a lot to learn. He was absolutely right. I did. I do. I still do. I'm passionate on that committee about open space. Washington County has a bonding referendum they passed years ago to remove land from development and preserve open space. I think that's a great thing, and you know, our county and our city are growing quickly, and I love to see the open space as well. I am employed by the Minnesota Counties and Governmental Trust. It's a joint powers that serves, provides risk management and coverage, insurance coverage, to 81 of the 87 counties in Minnesota, as well as about 400 county-affiliated agencies, soil and water districts, county fairs, county historical societies, multiple joint powers, law enforcement agencies, that type of thing. I've been doing that for 15 years, so I'm very familiar with local government, the constraints in local government, the difficulties that they face, whether it be budgeting, funding, mandates from state, federal government. I understand the difficulties of balancing competing interests that local governments have to do. I'm running for city council because I feel I have a duty to serve the city. It's been very good to me. I have, like I said, a lifetime of service and leadership, and my kids are grown and moved out. I'd like to see the city thrive and be a great place to raise a family like it was for me to raise my family. Oh, and lastly, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum together and giving me an opportunity to introduce myself to you.
Thank you, Mr. Severson. Got it. Last but not least, Mr.
You could just say Juan.
Juan. Nice to see you.
First of all, I want to throw a disclaimer out there. As you can note, my accent, it's a little bit rough. I'm not going to use elegant words, just basic words. That's part of my communication skills. But just in case I stop and think, it means my translator switch is not working that well, either because I'm nervous or it's just not working at all. So, having said that, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting this together and give us the opportunity to talk to the community, live audiences, and so forth. Okay? So, I will start, I have a whole page to read, but I'm going to, what I'm going to do, I'm going to talk to you from the heart. I think it's more effective. I was born in Mexico, was raised by my grandparents for 12 years. In 1972, I was adopted by my stepfather and my mom. They lived in San Antonio, Texas. They arranged the paperwork, and legally, I came to the United States that way. I grew up in San Antonio, Texas. That's my hometown. Then I met a Minnesota girl, and here I am, 35 years later, married to the same girl with four kids and four grandkids. I service, I started in Texas, in the Texas National Guard, but I transferred right away to the Minnesota National Guard, and I spent 33 years in service with four deployments, two overseas and two statewide. I am a fan of riding a motorcycle, so I do have my 2017 Indian vintage leather. Why is it spurdy? But I also belong to the Combat Vets Motorcycle Association, CVMA, which, that nonprofit organization works with veterans that are less fortunate than us, and we help out with different programs. Sometimes just by going and saying hi and talking to them, that's enough for them. It makes their day, their week, and that's who I am. In the fall and in the winter, I volunteer for, at the food shelf in North St. Paul. I work with Kathy. I don't know if you know Kathy. I work as taking the groceries out, and also too, they use me as an interpreter as we get more and more Spanish-speaking families through there. Why, now that I'm retired, you know, in 2021, a lot of people are asking me, why are you running for city council? You're supposed to enjoy life and be retired and do the right retiree things. But you know, honestly, as a servant leader, like Gary said, you know, it's not an obligation, it's a passion that we both or we all have to serve our community, and I think I have a lot of energy left in me to continue that. I want to serve my community. I moved from Stacy, Minnesota in 2000, so it's gone on 24 years being here in Oakdale. And the bottom line is, yes, all my kids are gone and spread out throughout the cities. The, I want my grandkids to come back to Oakdale and have a beautiful community waiting for them in their future, and that's what's driving me to do a lot of these things. I love the community. I think it's very, very effective of what the city council has done for the last few years, and kudos to all of you out there, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Santos Escobal. Did I get it right? Did I get it? I know, I feel that, I feel if I say, you know, got to make sure I say the right salutations. But before I move on to the questions, I just want to say, one thing I forgot to mention is that our questions will alternate who starts. So, we'll start with Carrie. We'll just go down the line, then reset back with, so question one, question two, question three, question four, and so on. Just make sure also that, I know we had instructions on how far to keep the mics from us before we start, but just make sure you keep your mic within a good distance, but not too close, but not too far either. Make sure that everything gets picked up for both our live audience and our viewing audience. So, and I've got a 2017 Harley Davidson, not quite an Indian, but love to go riding one. Thank you. So, I'm going to flip it over to my cohort, Ms. Prop, for question number one.
Okay. We're going to start off with what attributes make you best suited for the task of being Oakdale City Council member?
Thank you for the question. Honestly, I think my best attribute is I'm humble. I am eager to learn from everybody about the corner of their world, the corner of Oakdale that matters most to them, and I have the energy to dig in, learn what I can, learn from both sides, or all sides if there's more than two, and sometimes there are, and to find the best, the best answer to solve a problem, to add something new, to move forward. So, I really think that it's just being humble and knowing that I don't know everything and being willing to find the answer. I'm a pretty, despite stumbling over this one, effective communicator, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to be out there and, and you meet people where they are in person, on the phone, text, email, whatever it is, so that we can find the right answers for the community.
Thank you. Carrie, stick with those first names then.
Sure. Severson, by the way.
Severson.
I've been called lots of things. Thank you. Attributes. I have a collaborative leadership style. I think it's very important to seek input from all different viewpoints. We are all sort of a product of our life experience, and each of us has a unique life experience, and there's value in that experience from all of us. So, I've learned, it's a learned behavior. I have years and years of management experience, but I've learned that the best outcomes are those where you seek input from multiple people. You get buy-in from people that way, and you usually end up, not usually, you always end up with a better product in the end. So, I think that collaborative leadership style would be a great attribute for a city council member. In addition, I'm a quick learner. Certainly, as a city council member, I would have a lot to learn, no question about that. A lot of research and a lot of learning to do. Like Carrie, I would agree, I'm a humble leader as well, don't think I have all the answers, and definitely am willing to listen to others and their opinions, and I can't see, can't see my last nod ad here. I do seek input from everyone, so I think it's important that we listen to different viewpoints and work together to find the best solution.
Juan.
Yes. Thank you for the question, Angie. So, attributes, as a servant leader, that's one of my main principles that I follow. It's very important to be open-minded and be ready to get feedback from the people that are being affected on a policy or a law, whatever the case might be. And I'm talking by experience from the military side. I got to the highest point of rank where you need input from junior enlisted, junior officers, because you don't have all the answers, and to be willing to be open-minded and learn from them, it's very rewarding, and that's the way I see it. Here, I don't have all the answers, but I certainly can learn from the, you know, the city council members, and if I have to go back and outside the city council and ask for more advice, I will. Okay? So, that's, as a servant leader, I think that's, that's my trait, that's my skill that I bring to the city council.
Thank you. Question two would go to Gary.
The second question, we'll start with Mr. Severson. If elected to the Oakdale City Council, what would be your top three priorities?
My top three priorities would be, first of all, fiscal responsibility. I think it's important that we're very prudent with our taxpayer dollars. Affordability is a concern for all of us. We're all being hit by inflation. I just got my homeowner's bill. I work in the insurance industry. I just got my homeowner's bill last week. It was a 35% increase. While I work in the industry and I understand why we're seeing those kind of increases, anyway, affordability is an issue for all of us, so it's important for the city to keep our taxes as low as we possibly can, keep our fees low, assist our residents with their own budgets. Secondly, I think we probably all have the same issues, priorities, but secondly, I think public safety and law enforcement is critical. Crime is creeping into our city. The bus rapid transit line may increase crime in our city, so it's important that we, that the law enforcement and the fire department, all of public safety, has the support, the full support of the city council, and should be a very high priority. For crime, staffing for the city is going to be an issue. It's probably been an issue in the past. I know it is for the counties that I work with. Trying to find and retain staff is very, very difficult. So, as a council, we need to be very supportive of city staff and assist the city administrator with finding appropriate staff. That's three. I have others what we talk about. We can talk about those another time.
Thank you. Juan.
Thanks for the question, Paul. So, my top three priorities are public safety. I think Gary's right, you know, that we don't have the crime in Oakdale yet, but it's knocking at our doors. It's all around us. We cannot deny it. We cannot be naive about it. So, yes, my goal is to bring to the table like a five-year plan, you know, ahead, just prepare and get ahead of if anything happens to Oakdale and the crimes start coming in. The, and also to educate the, educate is a strong word. I want to say, inform the public of how critical it is to support our local police department. That's, that's one of the main ingredients in this priority, but not just law enforcement, also too, we're talking first responders overall, emergency medical services and fire department and so forth. The second one is the physically responsible accountability. It's big in my, one of my principles that I follow very, very close. We have to be accountable for how we manage the budget. Right now, everybody's hurting. You know, taxes are going high and high and high, wages are not going nowhere, so it's not up to us to go ahead and, you know, and increase more and more taxes and put some more burdens on, on the community. If we can wait for another couple of years just to get out of this, this hole, I think we'll be all right. But if we end up increasing taxes, then part of my, my principle is also to communicate to the community why we're doing it. That way, they fully understand, okay, that .5, that 1% that's going, coming your way, that's, this is what we're going to pay. And once they get informed of that, I guarantee you that, that things will settle down, because they don't want to hear taxes no more. Nobody wants to hear taxes. We don't want to hear taxes no more. Okay? The representation of the residents at the council table, that's our, that's our obligation. You know, that's why we get elected. You know, right now, I think the ship is heading the right direction. When I say ship is, Oakdale is heading the right direction, and it's been doing that for a long time. We are going to continue, whoever the public decides who's going to get those two seats, we're going to continue to support the same council that has brought us all the way up to this point. With, with our support, yeah, they'll make it happen. That's, that's pretty much it right now. Yeah.
Thank you. And Carrie?
Sure.
Your top three.
I outlined, I think, already a little bit of what interests me. I am also, one of my priorities is public safety, and I already said, but supporting our police department, the plan for both recruitment and retention for officers is really important. If we have officers ready to retire, we need to be prepared to, you know, fill those slots. That fully funded, fully staffed police department is really important. I think related to that in the infrastructure space is, Oakdale turns 50 this year. We have infrastructure that is in need of attention, and we have to prioritize balancing the needs of that aging infrastructure with new needs in the community. So, just making sure that we keep that top of mind and make sure that our staff are working in appropriate, acceptable facilities, you know, and I think of specifically the police department and others, just making sure that we remember that we have aging infrastructure that we need to address. And the other is strategic development. I think Oakdale has done incredible development over the last several years. It's so exciting to watch the commissions and the council and the building and the ribbon cuttings and to see what's out there and whether it's housing or it's our, you know, new coffee shop. It's all really exciting, and I just want to prioritize being a part of a continuing strategic development plan inside of the city.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Santos Escobal, I'll get you a question here. We've had a couple floaters. This one's probably a topical one. After some recent changes in state law, conversations are circulating around the potential of a city-run cannabis store. Are you in favor of that and thoughts in general?
Having two family members that use cannabis for medical necessities, I want to say I'm in favor, yet at the same time, I got to kind of get educated on whatever data that's out there. Right now, I don't think I have done that. I haven't researched that. I don't know what the effects would do to the city, but yes, I do have two family members that do that, and I know it works, just yet, just, I will never use that knowledge to say, I'm going to bring it up to the table for discussion until I get fully educated on that. So, yes, that's my answer. If you, if it's a yes or a no, right now, it's a no until I read more about it.
Got it. Thank you. Carrie.
Sure. It is such an interesting topic, isn't it? I am excited, like Juan, to learn more about it. I know we have a model with municipal-run liquor stores. I'm really searching for a model of municipal-run cannabis stores. I, you know, it's not the priority each day to wake up yet and start digging into that research, but it is something certainly that I've heard about, I've listened to, and I'm excited to know more about. I don't know that I'm necessarily comfortable saying, yes, I'm supportive, and no, I'm not supportive, but I think that it's a really intriguing opportunity, and I think learning more would be a prudent way to move forward.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Severson.
My short answer is no. While I, you know, acknowledge that a city-run cannabis store would probably be a great source of revenue for the city, I would rather that it be left to private industry to operate those stores. Certainly, there'd be a high level of regulation that the city would have to develop, and you might be working on that already. I don't know. I know our counties are struggling with that issue as well. But no, I would, I would be in favor of letting private, private entrepreneurs begin those businesses.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay. We're going to move on to what we've already been talking about a little bit, about public safety. It's been a big talking point during this election cycle. And what will you do to support the public safety in the city of Oakdale? And are there initiatives on the front right now that you would like to bring? on the front right now that you would like to bring to the city of Oakdale?
I feel like we've heard a lot from me on public safety today. And I don't have much more to offer, other than when I listen to our police chief talk about recruitment and retention, I, it really feels like that is kind of the linchpin of the whole entire thing. Making sure that they have a quality of life that makes them want to continue serving in that role and making sure that we pay them a salary that makes them stay in our community rather than choose a higher salary somewhere else. And, you know, listening to him talk about other ideas for retaining them, once they're here and they're on board and they're trained, you know, I, I think that there's a lot of different perspectives that have gone into that. Certainly, I've heard some of the conversation about, you know, what do we do in the entire city departments that make sure that we're not, you know, favoring one over all of the others because they all contribute to what we have going on here. But I think when it comes to public safety, some of his ideas are really intriguing and I, certainly worth exploring because, you know, getting them on board and keeping them here, if we can't do that, we really don't have a way to move forward with public safety.
Thank you.
I think it's important, and, and we're probably all gonna echo the same thing, but it's important that our police department, our fire department are fully funded, fully staffed. The, the public entities that I work with struggle with staffing with law enforcement. So whatever we can do as a city, as a council and as a city to support that fully funding and fully staffing, the police department and fire department is critical. It was good to talk with the police chief and the fire chief last week to hear that they are fully staffed right now. There are some retirements coming up apparently and, and that will be a challenge for them. But the other thing that really, that interested me, that, that I was glad to hear was that the city has a EAP program to support the police and fire department, well, all employees probably, with, with mental health issues. And they have a peer program as well to help those first responders deal with some of the mental stress that they're, that they're faced with on a daily basis. It's a large problem for our counties. It's a large problem for our cities. Fortunately, Oakdale doesn't have a jail, but county jails are, are even a larger issue. So specific initiatives, no, but I think we, leadership of the city needs to be very supportive of law enforcement and the fire department and also to support those programs to, to help that staff deal with, with the mental issues that they have to deal with.
Could you repeat the question again? By the time you got here, I forgot.
Okay. So public safety has been a big talking point during this election cycle. What will you do to support the public safety in the city of Oakdale? And are there any specific initiatives on the forefront that you can see that the city of Oakdale should adopt?
Okay. Being that is one of my top three priorities, I'm gonna go back to my military training a little bit. And the way we are trained to protect our property or either in combat or in a regular training environment is you worry about the life that's next to you, the soldier, next to your right and, or, and to your left. They will do the same thing. Therefore, you will be secure too. It starts that way. Once you build that barrier, it's very hard for anybody to penetrate that, that property, that perimeter. We should communicate that to our community. And it's already a program in place for the Neighborhood Watch program. I, I was starting to read about it this afternoon. It's there. I don't know how involved the community is, but I'm gonna take that as a, as a challenge to make it more vibrant. I think by giving the community that information that it's available, we can start having neighbors keeping an eye on each other's property. And, and that's how you create a guard in your, in your, in your community. The police department, first responders will be there, of course, but that's, that's, as a last resort. We can start doing that and that will help immensely with, with the public safety. The initiative is also too, is that have a five-year plan in place for, for the police department, first responders, whatever, those key departments that we have to, that serve our community through either retirements that, that are coming our way. We need to be prepared for that. We need to start recruiting early and so forth. So that's, that's my take on that, Angie.
Thank you, Juan.
So I think we're gonna start with Gary on this next question. And currently, the city already has a local area sales tax in place that the voters approved the last election. This current ballot has an extension opportunity about that local area sales tax. What's your stance on that and what are your thoughts?
I support that extension. Again, I keep, hate to keep going back to counties, but I work with counties on a daily basis and I have for 15 years. Inflation is hitting them hard and building projects especially. In fact, we had, in my office in St. Paul, we actually have a building project going on that, within a year, it's gone up 20 or 25%. So I understand the need. We need a new public works facility. We need a new law enforcement facility. We've got, we've got the, the local option sales tax passed, but we need to extend it so that we can pay for it. So absolutely support it.
Thank you. Juan?
Paul, I remember this question now. Thank you for the question. I support it 100%. And based on what we have heard as Carrie and I go at their door knocking, there was a couple of residents that asked us about that. And we tried to explain it. We didn't have the, the information in front of us, but we just received that little card today. I know I did. And explained everything in detail where all the taxes are going and what we're paying and why we extended the credit, or the tax. Believe it or not, they do understand. It goes back to what I said earlier. Communication with our community is very important. Once you tell them, this is what we're doing, especially in person, it's, it's amazing how, how effective it is. So they can read it through the newspaper, hear it from the news or a flyer. I'm okay with that too. But having that interaction between the, the city council and the community, it's, it's, it's one of the key factors to make it successful. So yes, I do support that.
Thank you. And Carrie?
I also support it. If I understand everything correctly, and remember, I'm humble enough to know that I might not, that about half of our taxes really paid by people coming in from out of town that are visiting our, our city. And so we can choose to pay some of that as residents as we're buying things around our town and have the rest of the community or the rest of the out-of-town, you know, guests chip in a little bit for the infrastructure that we need. Or we can all cover it later down the line. And so I think, you know, the, the wise and prudent thing to do is to extend it. You know, I go back to the aging infrastructure comments and those are things we need. And so we need to find a way to fund them and extending the tax is a, is a starting place.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Before I get to the next question, just to point a reference, the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce did endorse and support that sales tax referendum. So thank you all for your answer. My question, and I think it's going to start with Juan at the very end. Do you believe there's anything in your current life, such as full-time employment or other commitments, that may prevent you from fully performing your duties as a council member? Additionally, is there anything that would limit your ability to fulfill the role if duly elected?
Thanks. Thanks for the question, Mark. No, there's not. I'm retired, so I take naps between 2:30 and 3:00 before I pick up my grandkid.
I thought you and I were gonna be on Harley rides, so.
No, I don't. This is, this is gonna be my number one priority to fulfill. And I probably explain that in, in my closing statement, but it's, it's very, I'm very passionate to serve my community. And if I get elected, I will give them 100% of my time, whatever is necessary. And if the mayor decides to send me to take, open up a business somewhere, I'll go and be on his behalf. I'm okay with that. So yes, no, there's no, no, nothing that will stop me from doing that.
Great. Thank you. Carrie?
Sure. I do lead a busy life. That is absolutely for sure. I am fairly certain, though, I cannot be on the Parks and Rec Commission and on the city councils. So there is one thing there that I know will, you know, fall off of my schedule. But no, I was ready to take on the commitment when I paid that, you know, whopping $5 filing fee. You know, I asked a lot of questions about the amount of time that our existing council members spend on council business, on city business. You know, how often are they attending ribbon cuttings, for example? So outside of the meetings that we all know happen, how much time are they spending on all of those other activities? And I felt really comfortable with the answers. And, you know, getting someone's vote is my obligation to do the job right.
Great. Gary?
Very good point. Yes, I mean, asking for and receiving someone's vote obligates you to fulfill the duties of a position. Do I have anything that would prevent me from doing that? No. I also would begrudgingly give up my Economic Development Commission seat and also my Washington County Park seat. Both, both I'm passionate about, enjoy doing, but obviously would need to give those up and focus my attention on, on Oakdale City Council.
Great.
Okay. Well, we're gonna go back to Carrie here. What do you see as the city's greatest challenge in the next five years?
I think that is a really great question. I honestly think as comprehensive and amazing job as we do with our communications here in the city, I think we have some other challenges that aren't the greatest challenge, but I think like Juan has said tonight, is just helping the community understand what some of these decisions are really going to, what they mean, getting their buy-in, getting their support, listening to their perspective on other opposing sides of it, you know. I, I, I know I just keep talking about the 50-year-old infrastructure and it's just gonna take a lot of, you know, conversations about that. I don't look out at the city and see something wildly wrong with what we have going on there. I don't see insurmountable challenges sitting in front of us in the city of Oakdale. So I really think that it's just helping people understand that we will have some, you know, hard decisions when it comes to the next few years of making sure that our facilities are on point and that we are delivering our services despite, you know, aging infrastructure and that we're able to make the decisions that they need us to make. I actually look out and see incredible opportunities in Oakdale and huge challenges are not, are not the thing that I see out there.
Okay. Thank you. And Gary?
Challenges. Affordability for our residents is a huge challenge. So we need to maintain the quality of life and the quality of services that this city has provided for my 35 years here. But we also need to be cognizant of the costs and the burden that it places on our residents. So I think the challenge is going to be maintaining that balance of providing those goods, good quality services, but not overtaxing our residents. Crime is certainly going to be a challenge. Again, we've talked about, all three of us, I think, about supporting our police department and giving them the tools they need to maintain a safe city. The other thing I'd like to mention is there in the larger neighboring cities, there's what I, what I want to call government creep, which is there's, there's initiatives to, for the city to approach things like minimum wages and childcare subsidies. Those types of things that, in my opinion, are not appropriate for a local city government or better handled on the state or federal level. And so I think that's, you know, those types of issues will probably be presented to the council and I think we need to, to be cognizant of what the city's role is in those types of issues.
Thank you, Gary. How about you, Juan?
Thank you, Angie, for the question. I remember that question. I gotta pay attention now, so. I, I see a couple of challenges. The infrastructure, like Carrie said. I think one of our residents, when I was talking to, to him, is he was shocked to hear that Oakdale was gonna be in the 50th year anniversary. And with that comes a lot of movement, a lot of changes in the infrastructure. So he was surprised and, and said, well, because he was so proud of the street that he just got, brand-new street, you know, in front of his house. So, did you know that I paid $2,400? Okay, see, but I'm happy, I'm okay with that. He said, I'm okay with that. And then when I told him, well, just wait because it's coming our way for every resident in Oakdale, that there's gonna be some changes on the infrastructure and that we have to pay too. And I think that's gonna be one. And if we can start early to put that information out to the residents, how much, where we, if we're gonna do it in steps. See, I haven't heard the plan yet, but if there's a plan in place, God bless America, right? We already ahead of the game. But if we don't, then we just start thinking about communicating that to the community because it's important for our community to know those things that's coming. I'm not a fan of initiatives or programs also, like Gary said. Once you start talking about initiatives and programs, that means that somebody's paying for that and that's gonna be the, our residents. And I'm not a fan of that. Now, if we have to go that route, then we need to tell them ahead of time. But that's the, the two challenges that, you know, the tax increase and, and the infrastructure.
Thanks, Juan.
So each of you have talked a little bit about your vision for the city. What then would be some of the barriers to fulfillment of your vision for the city of Oakdale? And I think, Gary, we're gonna start with you this time.
I think certainly the first thing that comes to mind is dollars, budgets. Hard choices have to be made. And not everything can be done that, that maybe we want to be done. So as leaders, we're probably all accustomed to having to make those hard choices and explain those hard choices to others. So I think dollars would be probably the highest barrier to the vision. Another, another barrier might be buy-in from residents. We are becoming a more diverse city and I believe that's a good thing. But with that comes differing opinions on what priority should be. And so again, it's, it's difficult to make that balance. And so that's going to be a difficulty, at least, maybe not a barrier, but a difficulty at least, to try and get buy-in from the entire city.
Thank you. Juan?
I hardly see any barriers in the community or, Paul, say that question.
But really, you know, you touched on the vision you have for the city.
Oh, the vision, okay.
So are there barriers that you can anticipate to make it difficult to fulfill that vision?
I don't think there, there's gonna be hardly any. And this is the reason why. I'm a fan of bringing back the town hall meetings back in place. That's a communication, right, between the city council and the community. Once we, once the community... Once we, once the community kind of put trust on us of decisions that we make, I think it will make it easier to make decisions at our level to help the community with anything that comes our way. In other words, from the infrastructure to higher taxes, whatever the case might be. We need to communicate that to the community ahead of time, not while we're doing it, not while, after it's passed. I think that's the only feedback that I get that is, you know, it could be, you know, from the residents as I'm talking more and more with people out there. And, you know, that, that could be a barrier. That the communication portion, we need to bring back that town hall meetings and so forth. I attended city hall meetings here, and it's very rare that I see the, all the chairs taken. And that kind of breaks my heart. I don't know if, well, I can go that. One way is everybody's happy in Oakdale and they're okay with what we're doing here, right? Or they're not aware of the power they have when they come and talk directly to the mayor. And I think that's very important to me. I'm going to push that over and over and over again. Communication, that way there won't be no barriers between the government, local government, and our community.
Thank you. Carrie?
Honestly, I've spent so much time talking about police staffing. And because I've spent so much time on that, I think it's important to recognize that one of the barriers to that is the pay that all the other cities pay. Their law enforcement officers. We can't control that. And, you know, the best we can do is, you know, have a competitive pay scale here and create a culture that nobody would ever want to leave. I think that's a very real barrier for the model that I've laid out with public safety. I also agree so much with what Juan has said about engagement of the community. There are some pockets of our community that are wildly engaged. I think it's really exciting. But I would love to hear, you know, just a little bit from the people who aren't engaged. Because I want to know what it is that makes their quality of life here in Oakdale so great or what would make it better. And if they're not engaged yet, that's a barrier to, to learning more about what our residents can really benefit from.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, the next question, before I ask it, if, if the answer doesn't include, quote, "prioritize Summer Fest," I'm going to be a little disappointed. Just, I'm just telling you that right now.
I'm going to be disappointed as well.
We all will be. So, and I think this one starts with Juan at the very end. How would you characterize the economic conditions in the city of Oakdale? And how would you propose the best work with the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce and the business community if elected? And OSCO? That wasn't part of the question, but I just added it for fun. Juan?
Well, yes, I concur. So, the, say that, say that again, simplify.
Yeah, so how would you, just, if you had to cooperate and work together with the Oakdale Area Chamber, the business community, and how does, how to best cooperate, what would, you know, how would you, how would you help with the economic turning wheels, so to speak?
Funny you should ask that, because I was just reading about the BRIA program that the city of Oakdale has with the Chamber of Commerce. And I got to the point where I read the, the recruitment, you know, for local businesses, going to schools and, you know, kind of advertise, this is what we need, you know, from electricians, plumbers, printers, you name it. I'm really a fan of that. I, I really, that's part of, of taking somebody from straight out of school and mentoring them to do wonderful things in the community. I think that's a good program. I will follow up with that. If given permission or the legality of city, having a city council and going to recruit or talk of what the program is all about for the city of Oakdale. If I can get some younger folks interested in that, so when they graduate, they have a job waiting for them, or an apprentice job waiting for them here in Oakdale. Again, we're talking from electricians to plumbers, to every, any trade available that the schools have. I think that's very important for the young generation to have that opportunity to work for somebody, especially here, locally here in the city of Oakdale. And what was the second part? Something about a festival?
Yeah, yeah, that, you can add the festival as a priority if you'd like, but yeah. I think you've got it, just about how the Oakdale Chamber and business community and the city council can kind of work together to.
Yeah, BRIA is a good program. The more I read about it, the more, more I can support that very 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Prioritize Summer Fest.
I love it. Next question.
You know, Juan brings up BRIA, which is an amazing program. In my chamber, we are a part of BROW Minnesota, which is the same thing, right? Business retention and growth. And, and I love that program because I get to talk to the businesses and find out what's working for them, what challenges are they experiencing, and what are their plans? And how can, you know, me and my chamber help support the plans that they have? And how can the city help them to do the same? And so I, I love that program and I love being a part of those visits to get to know people. And really more to that point is I'd really love to hear from Oakdale businesses more specifically about what they'd like to see from their city council and their representatives. Just to understand, because I am really aware, especially in my chamber, so I know that it's probably the same in yours. While businesses come together, businesses are so very different. They all have different needs. They all have, you know, different characters inside of them. And listening to each and every one of them is critical to find out what they think the economic conditions in the city are. You know, as, as a person who's not yet really digging into those details inside of Oakdale, I, you know, how would I characterize the economic conditions in the city? It looks great from here. You know, I, I know I said earlier, I'm pretty psyched about that coffee shop. And so, you know, it, it looks great from here. But listening to the business owners would really give me a, a whole perspective. And I'd really like to be able to do that. And how should the city be cooperating with the business community? Aside from the BRIA visits, I think it's also making sure that we're setting aside time to have meaningful conversations, to make sure that we are not just saying, we want to hear from you, but instead we are inviting them to the table to have that conversation and making space for them. And also Summer Fest.
Can't say that word enough times. Thank you.
Summer Fest. Now that that's out of the way, no, I sort of echo the, the comments that Juan and Carrie have made that, you know, we need to seek input from our business community. We need to listen to our business community. You know, that, that business retention program is wonderful. In, in my three or four years on the Economic Development Commission, we've had a very good response from the business owners that have participated in that. Wonderful, a wonderful program that I was not familiar with before I became involved with that. So we need to seek input. We need to be responsive. When a business owner lets us know that there's an issue, a conflict, whatever the case may be, we need to let them know that as a city, we're, we're willing to listen, we're willing to hear them out. We're willing to do what we can to assist them in their business. And then just a couple other things. If we maintain a self, a safe, well-maintained city where people want to work and live and do business, that's going to do a tremendous amount to assist the businesses that are located in our city. So that's maybe the most important thing we can do. Lastly, from my philosophy, one of the biggest things we can do for business is get out of the way. So as, as much as we can reasonably limit the regulation, the intrusion into business operations, the better our businesses can do. I've been a small business owner. I understand how difficult, absolutely difficult it is. And the amount of administrative requirements, regulations, taxes, they're overwhelming. And so we need to do what we can as a city to, to sort of try and stay out of the way. Of course, there's, there's safety issues and we can't let businesses harm others. Businesses harm others, but we need to do what we can to stay out of the way.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to a fun question. Juan mentioned that he has a 2017 Indian motorcycle. So with that, what's something unique about each of you that you would like to share with the public?
Is this my question?
It is your question.
I grew up in Minnesota and I grew up in rural Minnesota. And I left in 2005, I think. Like I said, we came back two and a half years ago. And when we came back and I, my best friend lives in Lake Elmo, right? So that's how I ended up in Oakdale, is my best friend lives in, in Lake Elmo. And it was assumed, not asked, not anything, that our family would play hockey. And so at age 46, I learned how to play hockey. And it has been amazing. I went to Hockey 101 in June of '23. And it was my first time on skates in too many years to count publicly right now. And I was just amazed at all of those women. I play in WHAM, which is Women's Hockey Association of Minnesota. And it was amazing because everybody can play hockey. And I learned that on the very first day of Hockey 101. And my, my best friend is a goalie on our team. And so I just joined her team, again, assumed, no conversations, just, I would then become a lady devil, which is what is, is exactly what happened. And my son is in hockey. And now my husband plays hockey for the Warriors, which is a veterans group. And I think it's pretty cool to learn to play a new sport, especially when it's complicated and scary as hockey, you know, at, at age 46. So I would say that that's something unique about me.
Thank you for sharing. That was awesome. Okay, Gary, you?
Wow. I wish I played hockey too. Boy, I think these are interesting and exciting, but no one else may. But number one, I am a Civil War nut. I do have, have done a lot of reading, research, fascinated by the United States Civil War. There's many things about it that intrigues me, but one of it is the honor that soldiers displayed during that war. For example, if you were taken prisoner, the one side would say, you're my prisoner, put down your gun. Stay here, we got to go over here and fight. And when they came back, they would still be there because that was, that was the honorable thing to do. So that's sort of, well, interesting to me. I am the proud owner of a 1976 Pontiac Trans Am. I dug it out of a barn where it had been sitting for, oh, since 1992. So it had been sitting for 30 years, didn't run, has 56,000 miles on it. Dug it out, got it running, brought it home, polished it up, still got some work to do. But I am passionate about classic cars and I enjoy my Trans Am a lot. I do, by the way, own a motorcycle, but I'm ashamed to tell you guys what it is. I'm not going to mention it. It's not an Indian and it's not a Harley, but it has two wheels and goes vroom, vroom.
That counts.
Other than that, another passion of mine, I do have a degree in economics from the University of Minnesota. I've always been fascinated by economics. And so I have a passion for investing. In fact, I've had an opportunity now again, and I had an opportunity for about six years to be, to do some institutional investing for my employer. Find it absolutely fascinating. It's a lot easier when it's somebody else's money. Well, sort of. It's a little more stress maybe, but, so I'm passionate about that as well.
Thank you for sharing, Gary. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Juan?
Well, thanks for the question. The, believe it or not, I enjoy the winters in Minnesota. It's not only, that's the only thing that keeps me here in Minnesota, is my lovely wife too. But I do enjoy it, just being out there. You know, if you go and ask the my neighbors what kind of a neighbor I am, this is the guy, they'll probably tell you, this is the guy without me telling them, he comes in and cleans my driveway with a tractor and does my grass all summer. And, and that's who I am. I love to do stuff like that for my neighbors. And I do like five houses, five driveways in the winter. They're very appreciative and I enjoy it because it gives me time and my little tractor. And it's just my me time, the cell phone doesn't work.
Can I give you my address?
In the summertime, I do the same thing. I cut the grass and I cut their yards too, with their permission. So that's something that is very rare. One neighbor, they just moved two years ago. I don't remember where she was at, but the, by the state fair, they, they had a house there. I don't know what town that is. They moved next to me and I went and asked the lady, can, can I cut your grass? I said, whoa, you, how much are you charging? She said, nothing. I'm just going to do it for free. And if you give me permission, I'll do it all summer. And her husband was very happy. And that's the type of person, that's the type of person I am. You know, I, that's a little bit weird, but different, but they appreciate that.
Thank you, Juan.
So this next question deals with our development. So with the large amount of population growth that the city is experiencing, what can the council do to keep the Oakdale charm strong with all the new residents coming in? And Gary, you're going to be first on this one.
Summer Fest.
Points.
He's done. Hands down, mic drop.
That's, that's only really half tongue-in-cheek. It's, it's those types of things, the touch a truck, the Summer Fest, the, the Discovery Center, the rec programs that, that, that the city has, has been engaged in for years. Those are the types of things to keep. You know, I, I'm not sure how to do it, but I'm also from a small town. And Oakdale, to me, has always had sort of a small-town feel to it. We're growing larger. I've seen it grow from, I don't know, it was about 10,000 people, I think, when I first came here to 27 or something like that now. And it still sort of feels that small-town way, but we need to engage the residents in, in those types, use our parks, use our recreation department, Summer Fest. Those types of activities to, to keep people engaged and invite new residents to become involved in all the opportunities that the city provides.
Juan, the Oakdale, the Oakdale charm.
Okay, well, that's, that's an easy one for me. And this is the reason why, as an example, Carrie and I had an inflatable or flatable for that event, and it worked perfect. It gave us a chance to talk to the community and then some, because a lot of them were from outside, you know, the Oakdale area. I think that's very important, like Gary said, engagement with a, with a face-to-face, you know, communications. That is, that what I will continue to support and be very active on that.
And Carrie?
Sure. I concur that we have amazing festivals and amazing recreation programs. We also have really incredible parks. I think we've done an amazing job of keeping up with that. The new one that we just opened is beautiful. And we are taking care of our families here in Oakdale with offering them, with 29 now parks. Not all have a playground, but, you know, just incredible facilities. I, I was talking to somebody in White Bear and she told me that we have the best skate park in the metro, in the East Metro. And that her daughter skates and they keep her skateboard in the trunk of the car so that when they're driving through Oakdale, they can stop at the skate park, which was something I've never really considered. And so I think it's just those small details, but, you know, really. And so I think it's just those small details, but you know, really having our mayor so active on social media helps this be a welcoming place for anybody new coming in. Because if anybody has a question and anybody has an issue and they post it in those pages, he is right there answering that question. And I think that's really helpful. The city's Monday Morning Minute that Communications Team does with him is, it keeps us all connected. It keeps that small town feel, no matter how many people are sitting inside of these city limits. And it's those small details that that help, I think. Because the more you're connected, the more you're gonna go to the new coffee shop or the new park or whatever else it is, and continue just this circle of connectivity.
Thank you. Wait a minute, the mayor's on social media? Just kidding, I follow him, he's fabulous. Just kidding. See, I'm never gonna be invited back to host this.
You did a great job in your last time.
Just, I'm just telling you. We got about three questions to go before we run out of time, so that's what we're doing. And you know how in a rock concert, they'll occasionally play some really hard songs and then give you three or four ballads and come back to a hard song? Well, that's what we're doing right here. So we're, we're just off the ballads and now we're back to one of the more intense songs. So rent control. Rent control has come to the Twin Cities and cities all across the metro area have been struggling with how to implement these policies, on pressures on both fronts, to have them and not to have them. What is your position on rent control? Would you support the expansion of rent control ordinances throughout the east metro, given the housing shortages already facing the region? And this one starts with, you know, Juan, we're kind of paired together, so I think you start on this one.
So I have never heard of an ordinance or a policy. I, I'm not familiar with that information, but if if it's presented in front of me and is beneficial for the community, meaning the renter, I'm all for that. But if if we're gonna start looking at incentives and stuff for the renter, I'm not. Because again, the burden is gonna go back to the community with taxes and everything. So to tell you the truth, I am not familiar with any ordinances that are available here in the city of Oakdale. Does that answer?
That answers the question. Thank you. Kerry.
I think you used the words, the pressure from all fronts and the need for balance. And I can see that. I think Oakdale has done an amazing job of building multifamily housing that is hopefully going to take some of the pressure off of the demand for housing. And hopefully, with any luck, that will be able to stabilize the the rent prices. I will be honest and say I don't know enough about either side. You know, I've been a renter and I've been a landlord. Man, the pressure and the balance, I get it. I don't think I know enough, honestly. I am willing to learn and I'm willing to listen and come up with the right, the right mix of whatever. I hesitate to think that it's where the city needs to to meddle, but again, I could learn otherwise that this, you know, maybe it is absolutely appropriate for a city to to be a part of that conversation and decision-making on it. I'm willing to learn.
Great, thank you. Gary.
No, I do not support rent control. While I recognize that housing affordability is an issue for many, many people, you can see from, we can learn from St. Paul's experience with rent control, that they immediately had to retrench, change the ordinance, make tons of exceptions to try and meet landlords' needs. And I'm afraid that rent control, to some degree, will will result in a deterioration of the the housing available, rental housing that's available, just because as a landlord, there's only so much money to go around and and they've got a corner somewhere if rent control is in place. So no, I wouldn't support it.
Thank you.
Okay. Kerry, this one's for you. Well, it's for all of you, but we'll start with Kerry. If Oakdale follows the state population trend for the, in four years, there will be more people over the age of 65 than under the age of 18, and the younger generation will be much more diverse. Do you have any thoughts on addressing the needs and priorities of these distinct groups and how might you encourage them?
What a great question. What a complex question. You know, I think part of this is related to the housing conversation, right? With an aging population, they're staying in their homes longer and has an impact in the rest of the housing supply. And so I think that there's really important conversations to be had about, you know, why are people staying in their homes? Why aren't they moving to some of the, you know, senior housing? We just built an amazing facility in Oakdale, so we have some really great opportunities there for people to access that. And the under 18 group, I'm not an expert, but I do have a 10-year-old in my house. And, you know, it is, Generation Alpha is such an incredible generation. And I'm wildly biased, of course, but I just think that there are some really distinct needs that they're that they're gonna have, you know, and it goes beyond my my knowledge of parks. We can't offer parks, right, as the answer to everything. I think we have a lot of opportunity to continue our great working relationship with our schools to make sure that the city and the schools are intersecting in appropriate places, to make sure that the the students are supported. We have an incredible recreation program that's able to offer opportunities to our young people during the, you know, summer vacation and other times when the students aren't in school. And so I think it's really just about having conversations with each and every group to make sure that what we have here is what they, you know, what they want, what they need, and will help us support the the rest of of the community as well. You know, I don't want to lose sight of all of those business owners in the middle of of those two age groups, but to make sure that we're able to deliver what we need for all of them.
Thank you.
Would you repeat the question for me?
Sure. Okay, so if Oakdale follows the state population trend, in four years, there will be more people over the age of 65 than under the age of 18, and the younger generation will be much more diverse. Do you have any thoughts on addressing the needs and priorities of this, of these distinct groups and how you might encourage them?
Soon I will be, I will be joining, not in four years, but soon I'll be joining that over 65 crowd. No, I don't have ideas or initiatives or how to address that. First of all, I welcome the diversity. I think, as I talked about before, I'm a collaborative leader, so I think seeking input from from all groups and people of all different types of life experience would be helpful. And I've also talked about how leader, in leadership, we have to try and balance competing interests. And this might be a case where we have the competing interests of the older population, like myself, and the competing interests of the younger population. And that means that some of us, all of us, maybe have to make some sort of sacrifices. But I don't have specific ideas on how to address that.
Thank you, Gary.
Remember your question.
Okay, good.
Gary, I'm already there. 63. I'm gonna use my life experience in Oakdale just to answer your question. When I retired in 2021, I was ready to sell the house, you know, kind of beautify it, remodel it, and then sell the house with, for a good profit, and move into a smaller house, a townhome, whatever, senior living center, whatever the case it was, right? We were looking into a lot of options out there. And it was just, everything was so expensive. Yes, I was gonna get a lot of money for the house, but I was gonna throw it back again into another investment. So what I started looking into is building an apartment in the back. I was blessed enough with enough property that I could afford to put a 900 square feet apartment attached to the garage. Once I refinanced the house, I got the profits to build the the apartment. And then I moved my daughter and her family, husband and and two, three grandkids, into the house. So now the affordability of having a mortgage payment a month, it came, it went from half. So I'm living in a brand-new apartment with everything new for $700 a month, and my daughter's got a four-bedroom house for $700 a month. So that's how I approached this issue, because I knew that this is where COVID was starting to come in, and prices were going up, and I kind of saw that in front, again, five-year plan, right? That's a military mentality that I have. That really solved the issue of me staying close to the family, having my own property, and continue on in life until it's time to go home. So having said that, that was one of the things that I give kudos and praises to the city council. Because before I started the process of doing the apartment, I was told by other retirees, oh, you're gonna come into the city council and they're gonna give you a hard time and it's gonna take six months to get it approved and blah, blah, blah. Well, when I came in, there was 11 families at that night, I remember, doing the same thing. So it was common that everybody was looking that same, you know, kind of program, same way of thinking. And the city council was kind enough to accommodate us with with the permits to do that. So at our level, going back to the question, at our level, local government, we can accommodate stuff like that. We have city codes that we can actually discuss and put it into effect to accommodate our community if they need to. So that's one way to solve some, something like, like a problem like that.
Thanks, Juan. Thanks for sharing.
So this evening has gone very fast, and this will be the final question. So again, starting with Gary, what do you feel is missing from our economic base, missing from our business community? And what do you think you can do to address that need or perceived hole?
Great question, and I don't pretend to know all the business that's that's based here in Oakdale. When I, when I joined the Economic Development Commission, I, my first thoughts were, what I'd like to see in Oakdale in terms of business would be high-tech type jobs, medical tech type jobs, you know? We have a good business, a great business here in Oakdale that's, keeps expanding, that does medical tech work. But so those are the sort of things that I thought about first was, this is what we need. I remember when I interviewed with the council to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission. In fact, it might have been you, Paul, that asked me, but what was my vision for Oakdale? It was to not be Woodbury. So retail, retail, retail is great, but we need, we need business other than than retail as well. We need good-paying jobs, jobs that require technical skills, educational skills and so forth. I'm sorry, Paul, could you repeat the rest of the question?
The other piece was just, if you think there's a missing gap, what do you think can be done to address that need or fill that perceived hole?
The, the community development staff here at Oakdale is fantastic. And they do a good job. And, you know, I've had an opportunity to go out and meet some of the the businesses here, Slumber Land and Home Furniture and so forth. So I think in terms of the holes or what we can do, the challenge is going to be that we're almost out of open land. So new development is is gonna be very, very limited. And we'll be focused on redevelopment now, which I think is, I don't know, but I think is probably a little bit more difficult not to crack. So that may be one hole of, that's, that's an issue for us, is how do we redevelop? How do we attract businesses that need to redevelop existing properties and so forth?
Thank you. So Juan, what do you think is missing from our economic base or missing from this business community?
You know, Paul, I, that's a great question, which I am not familiar with the economic plans at the city of Oakdale. I didn't have a chance to look into the, you know, I know the website is full of gold nuggets in there that you can get some good information, but I am not familiar with with that now. I will get educated more as time goes by, because I'm sure that the topic is gonna come up again, especially from our community, you know, kind of, they're gonna, they're starting to ask questions. Every time we knock on the door, we don't know what kind of questions they're gonna have or concerns. But unfortunately, I cannot answer that because I am not familiar with that, with that plan.
Just fine, thank you. And Kerry, what do you think?
Purely on a consumer level, I think we have an opportunity to attract more hospitality businesses to the community. You know, whether we're talking restaurant brewery-type options, or, you know, when my family comes to town, they usually end up staying in a hotel in a neighboring city and not in Oakdale. I don't have much to offer them. And so I really think we have some opportunities to explore some options in hospitality. I, you know, what can we do to fill that gap? You know, business attraction is, of course, kind of the ultimate goal. So what are the good options? What are some places that would fit really well in our community? You know, we, do we need the biggest of high-rise-style hotels? Probably not. So what kind of boutique options are there out there? Find the thing that would really fit well inside of our community. You know, find the middle-level restaurant that a family can go to without driving outside of our city limits and go and tracks, attract some of those options and bring them in. I can't pretend to know the details of how that work happens, but I really think that that's our, that's our greatest opportunity.
Thank you. All right, well, thank everybody. We're gonna do closing statements in a second, but before I do, obviously want to put a plug in for the Oakdale Area Chamber. First off, you go to oakdaleareachamber, all one word, dot org and and see everything you need to know about the organization. There are some key dates coming up. December 21st is the partnership with the city of Oakdale for the Winter Wonderland Event. If you want to join 1,200 of your closest neighbors, having hot dogs and donuts at the Oakdale Discovery Center, you, it's an amazing event. So those that have gone, it's a really fun deal. We will have a spring fling sometime in the month of April-ish, so stay tuned for that. That's not quite finalized yet, but please do. And when you see that, invite friends. That event is a, is a key fundraiser. We do a lot for what's called Holiday Helping Hands. Got members in the audience that have been integral to that, where we give Christmas gifts to families and those fundraisers help us do that. There's also gonna be a golf tournament in June, don't have that date quite handy. Then there's June 26, 27, and 28. What, what do you think that might be?
I'm gonna guess, Summerfest?
Summerfest, thank you. June 26, 27, and 28. And then we've had a picnic for 20-some years that used to be on a Thursday. We mirrored it with Summerfest, and this year it's gonna be a nighttime event to match with the National Night Out, Night to Unite. So stay tuned for details on that. But and then there's a, you know, a lot of things happening, so please do, again, visit the chamber, and we will see you all on June 26, 27, and 28.
The golf tournament is June 23?
Thank you. I didn't have the date written down. I should have done that before I got here. So, closing statements. Again, thank you all, the part, you know, I think that, and I've been doing this a long time, that's probably the most questions we actually made it through. And I apologize to a few people that sent some questions that we didn't get to ask, but we tried to get as many from our audience and our viewers as we could. And so I appreciate that. So now we're gonna go in opposite order for closing statements. So we start at the end.
Okay. Okay. The American dream, right? Being born in Mexico, growing up in Texas, and achieving the highest rank in the military with, with a lot of friends that I made along the way. It's, it's having a wonderful wife for 35 years, four cars in the driveway, and two little dogs roaming around the house with the grandkids. That's the American dream that everybody is shooting for. The, it's achievable. It can be done. It takes a lot of work and dedication and never to give up. That's my advice to people struggling out there or giving up on the American dream. Never give up. Don't let anybody tell you that you cannot do that. Do it. It's a It's a privilege to be here in front of all of you. If selected, you know what you're going to get. A very humble person, servant leader, is passionate about the community. I would do my best to keep up with the city council and the direction they're going because it's a good direction. And I would do my best also to be very transparent where I'm going to be talking to people directly, face-to-face. That's my style. That's my goal. But having said that, because the ship, it's already heading the right direction, is I don't think you will lose, if, two of us are going to get selected out of these, us three. Either you choose me or Kerry, me and Kerry, or Kerry and Kerry. You won't lose because we all have the same principle, different approaches, but it's the same principles. We're passionate about our community. We love our community and that's why we're here. Okay? So thank you very much for allowing this to happen. I feel blessed and so have.
Thank you. Gary.
Thank you, Juan. I would echo that. I think, you know, we all want the same things for the city. We might have slight disagreements on how best to get there, but I think we all have the best interest of the city of Oakdale at heart. Thank you to the Oakdale Chamber for sponsoring this event and giving me an opportunity to introduce myself and let you all get to know me a little bit. As I mentioned before, I'm a collaborative, experienced decision-maker, seek input from all, but I'm toying with an idea that I haven't fully formed, but I'm going to throw it all at you anyway. I'll let the chips fall where they may. I think the best government is the government that's the least intrusive in people's lives and businesses' lives as well. And so I think that this, and by the way, to Kevin and Paul and Jake and Andy and those that have served the city, thank you. I've lived here for 35 years. It's been a fantastic place to live and you've all done, left a legacy or are leaving a legacy that you all should be very, very proud of. And so my idea is this, is that I've lived here for 35 years and sort of taken the city government for granted. And if I'm elected, I want that to continue. When you wake up in the morning and you see six inches of snow on the ground, I want you to take for granted that the city's going to be there and plow that street soon. When you go to the park, take your children, your grandchildren, your dog to the park, I want you to take for granted that it's going to be well-maintained, clean, safe, without having to think about it. When you turn on the faucet where you flush your toilet, you should be able to take for granted that those are going to work and the city has well-maintained utilities. If you're a business owner and you have an issue or a question or a problem, I want you to take for granted that you can go to the city and you'll be heard and hopefully your issues will be addressed. Thank you again for the opportunity. I humbly ask for your vote and I promise you that if I'm elected, I will not be bothered at all if you take me for granted.
I think it's a precious opportunity to get to know the city of Oakdale and the leaders and the staff that serve this community so well. I am asking for the opportunity to serve. I am committed, I am eager, I am humble, and I am looking forward to being a part of this community for quite some time moving forward. I just want to thank you guys for taking your time to plan this event and to sit here with us for a couple hours and giving us a chance to let people get to know us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So I am going to wrap up tonight and so really on behalf of the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, thank you candidates for your willingness to participate, for your willingness to run for office and sharing your thoughts with us tonight. Also, thank you to the viewers and to the residents who are here, your interest and your questions to help learn more about the candidates that are in front of us. You know, elections are very, very important, so the more information we can all get, the better we'll be off. And for more information, the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce has an East Metro Voter Guide that many of the candidates have completed the questionnaire, so please go to that information source. Plus, I think each of the candidates have their own social media page or information that's available for searching. Also, thank you to the city of Oakdale to host us tonight and then to my co-hosts. It's fun to be able to do this with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, good night. Thank you.